Welcome, everybody, to this at-large candidate forum for the candidates running for the South Bend Common Council. What we have tonight for you is a presentation of the Democratic candidates. And the reason we're featuring those candidates is because Democrats will have to pick three of these candidates when they vote in the primary election. There are also two candidates running in the Republican primary, and we'll hear a lot more from them before the November election. And they are Amanda Jean Grove and Davin Hackett. And Amanda is here this evening. In Indiana, we do have a modified open primary, and so you're able to decide which ballot to pull and which primary to vote in. So we did want to give Amanda a minute at the mic to introduce herself to all of you. So in case you decide to vote in the Republican primary, you will know who she is. And then we will focus on the contested Democratic race. And again, you'll need to pick three of the candidates on your ballot. So this is an excellent opportunity to compare them side by side. Amanda?
All right. Thank you for having me here today. Apparently, I'm too short to reach the mic. So, thank you for having me for a minute at the mic. And I wanted to tell you guys that I'm running because I love our city. I was born here in South Bend, and I love our communities and our people. And we're full of diverse people that deserve the best public servants to fight for them. So I believe that if we focus on economic development, that it will help with our -- I'm sorry -- that it will help with our issues of crime, homelessness, housing, and, of course, employment. I, of course, would also like to focus on the infrastructure in South Bend. I'd like to fix our roads, help our schools, and find practical uses for some of the abandoned buildings in downtown. My campaign slogan is "One City, One People, All Voices." So I care about hearing all opinions and concerns, even if they may conflict with my own. I will do what I need to do to help you. If you live in South Bend, I represent you. I don't care if you're rich, poor, black, white, Christian, Muslim, Republican, or Democrat. I will listen to all voices and concerns. So please vote to bridge that divide and unite our city. Thank you.
So you have three choices there, two candidates. And so that's why we're saying that that particular race is uncontested in the primary, but in the general election, you will just choose the top two regardless of party. And now we turn to the Democratic candidates. And each of them will have 90 seconds to start to tell you a little bit about themselves. We've asked them specifically to indicate why they are running for council and what specific experience and qualifications they will bring to the job. And after you hear from each of them, then we will turn to other questions of interest to voters. And we will start, stage left to stage right, with Alex Giorgio Rubin.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for coming me -- or coming tonight, and thank you to everybody that made this event possible. My name is Alex Giorgio Rubin, and I am seeking an at-large seat on South Bend's Common Council. I am a gay Jewish parent raising a brown son that is on the autism spectrum in Indiana, the state that brought us Mike Pence. And I have chosen to raise my family in South Bend because I believe in South Bend. I believe we've made incredible progress in the past eight years, and I want to continue on that progress. I'm proud to say that I've earned the endorsement of Run for Something, a national organization. And now I'm looking forward to earning the votes of the citizens of South Bend.
Thank you very much, Alex. We will turn next to Lori Hammond.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for the organizers of this event. Who am I? I have spent most of my life in some type of a servant's role. I would like an opportunity now to serve the city. I know I can make a difference. I have the vision. I have the business acumen. I want to fight for those who cannot fight for themselves, which is why my primary issue is to fight for wage increases. I'm a former business owner and general manager. I spent a summer mentoring with End Focus, which gave me an opportunity to work with several of the small business owners. I've been in banking and finance, all of those things that I believe give me the experience I need. I've studied economics and business development, so I want to use my skills to help bring strong investment and high-wage business to South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. And we turn next to Susan Kessam.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I'm Sue Kessam. I've been in South Bend as a resident for over 25 years. I've been attending council meetings for over three and a half years on a very regular basis. I've also participated in 14 city budget hearings. At those hearings, as a citizen advocate, I came having researched the background information. I asked questions, expressed concerns, and I gave suggestions. Out of that, I have 28 budget reform suggestions on my website, kessamforcouncil.com. I decide it's not enough to sit in the audience anymore. It's time for me to step up and have a seat at the table. I want to get South Bend back to necessities rather than wants. I think that infrastructure has been neglected. Neighborhoods have been neglected, and we need to get back to budgeting that first and then go from there. My promise to you is to work on making our tax dollars be spent wisely. And professionally, I'm a corporate trainer, analyst, and IT professional. Translated, that means I like making information easy to understand. As your council representative, I'm willing to scrutinize the numbers and suggest improvements. My community service and advocacy has included being a hospice volunteer, creating senior education programs, assisting Unity Gardens, bringing tech programs to South Bend, and keeping citizens updated with Missy Ann Observer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue. And we turn next to Joseph Luton.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming out. My name is Joseph Q. Luton, and I am a 30-year native of South Bend, Indiana. My family has resided in the area for nearly 95 years, and I come from a long lineage of servitude. My grandfather, being one of the first Black principals here in the area, always instilled into me what servitude was. Servitude is something that's sacrificial. At times, leadership can even be inconvenienced. I've noticed that we have come to a crossroads in South Bend. We are at a very, very critical place right now. With all of the progress that we have made, it is definitely important for us to continue to move forward. More importantly is the fact that we need people-centered governance. We need more community engagement, and we need our people and our communities to have our voice. That's why I am running for South Bend Common Council at large, and I look forward to engaging with you all in further discourse and to help to continue to move our city forward and to be meticulous in our approach in how we govern our city and engagement of people. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, Joseph. We turn now to Lynn Mahoney.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I want to thank the American Democracy Project, the League of Women Voters, and IUSB for hosting us tonight. I'm not a politician, nor am I part of the political machine. Most of you have never heard my name before. I'm helping my oldest daughter raise two of my grandkids, and I work full-time as a nurse. I'm already pretty busy. But there comes a time when you have to get off the sideline and try to help make a change. Somebody said one time, Dr. Benyon can probably tell us who, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." And I realized I was a spectator. I believe that for too long, those who grew up with opportunity have been making decisions in this city that don't take everyone into account. Those who grew up with less opportunity need to know that there are advocates on the council looking out for their best interests. Advocates who will listen to each unique neighborhood's issues and challenges. Everyone in this city deserves to be able to live safe, healthy, happy lives. I learned as a nurse that you treat everyone equally when they come to you for help. I intend to take that lesson to the Common Council if you see fit to vote for me on May 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. We turn now to Anne Mannix.
Hi. I'm Anne Mannix. I want to thank the organizers of this event. I'm running because I care about South Bend. Over the last 10 years, there have been shoots of new growth in the city. We've adopted a spirit of innovation. We have new young staff and new programs. City staff are making efforts to listen to people. I want to preserve that spirit of innovation and accountability. I also want to expand programs for neighborhoods, especially those that are struggling. Certain neighborhoods need housing rehab, new construction, and code enforcement for problem properties. New infrastructure improvement should be coordinated with other development. Grand funds can focus on areas with neighborhood plans. I've spent the last 33 years developing affordable housing. In 1997, I started a business. We work with nonprofits and local governments to match community housing needs with available resources. Then we work with a professional team to coordinate the project. Basically, we have to get people to do things without having any real power. I've hired and fired people, appeared in zoning hearings, developed negotiating skills, learned about budgets and lending, understood construction a little bit, and I understand legal documents. We work to develop quality living environments. We've developed over 1,000 units of affordable housing with values in excess of $162 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Now we will hear from David Parker Brooks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank the moderator and the host of this event tonight, and my esteemed panelists up here with me. I am David Parker Brooks, and I want to be your councilperson at large here in South Bend. I have been in South Bend for 24 years. I have seen this city through its ups and through its downs in that period of time. For the longest time, I had a need to serve. I couldn't make it into the military due to, well, obvious reasons, but I still had that yearning inside. So I was told, "Why don't you do something?" And some people approached me years ago, and I said, "Well, when it comes to running for office, I'm not a politician." They said, "That's the reason why you should run." I love this city. I left and went to Las Vegas for culinary school, and I said, "I'm going back to South Bend," and everyone thought I was crazy. I left $60,000 on the table to stay here and come back here, because it's not about the money. I love this city. Every day, I feed some of our older generation. I work for a company that serves our World War II generation, now the Korean War generation. I love South Bend. I work with children through nonprofits here in town that I'm part of. I sit on the board at HCOG. I also sit on the board at a new nonprofit startup called Family Matters Outreach Ministries. I do this to serve the people. I believe in servant leadership, and I want to be a leader, but first, I want to serve the people of South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And now we hear from Rachel Tomas Morgan.
I'm struck by the fact that further north at another campus at this same time, kind of Lisa Rice and John Kerry are talking about problems at a national level, while I and my respected colleagues are here on this great campus before you, focusing on issues that matter most to South Bend residents. The vision of America that I want to fight for in South Bend is one of dreams and opportunities for everyone, where people are welcomed, supported, and believed in as assets to our community. And that's why I'm here tonight and in this race for Common Council at large. For 27 years, I have made South Bend our home. My background has positioned me well to be an at-large member on the Common Council. As a mother, with my husband Peter Morgan, we raised our children on the West Side. As a committed neighbor, I have served on the board of the Near West Side Neighborhood Organization, and through neighborhood advocacy, have come to learn about the work of the Common Council. As a professional with 20 years of experience in project and fiscal management, strategic planning, and policy development, I work at Notre Dame Center for Social Concerns, teach sustainable development, bring classrooms into communities and communities into classrooms. I build partnerships to help communities address their most pressing problems. As an immigrant, I bring important skills in listening, collaboration, and working across difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. And finally, we hear from incumbent Karen White.
Good evening, and thank you for coming. My name is Karen L. White, and I've had the pleasure of serving as an at-large member of the Common Council for the last -- for at least 20 years. And eight years, I was a South Bend Community School Board trustee for eight. So I've given 28 years of my life to public service. Currently, I'm not only the vice president, but I'm also the chair of the Personnel, Finance, and Neighborhood Committees. I'm seeking reelection for a number of reasons, one of which the 2019 elections will bring many challenges for our city. Having an experienced, proven leader is important as we continue to do the work for all of South Bend. Much has been accomplished, but much remains. I am a very thoughtful, experienced, and proven leader, delivering results for our community. I have the ability to work collaboratively and respectfully with the council administration and the constituents, even though we disagree. I understand the budget, understand how government works, and I'm very proud to call this city my home. So I ask for your support as I seek reelection to be a member, to continue to be a member of the South Bend Common Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. And we know that there are a number of people who wanted to be here this evening, but as Rachel Tomas Morgan mentioned, we actually have several things happening at the same time. So we're talking about local politics here. Across town, they're talking about international politics. At the library, the mayor is talking about national politics. And so we have politics being discussed at all levels this evening. We are live streaming the event, but also producing a recording so that folks will be able to access it who wanted to attend but could not be here this evening. Our candidates have also been invited to participate in our votefor11.org online candidate guide, and you will see those appearing at votefor11.org in time for the early voting or absentee in-person voting, which begins April 9th. But you will also see them select responses from that guide printed in the South Bend Tribune. So we encourage those who are here to share that information with others so that they can hear from these candidates, even if they're not able to be with us tonight here in the performance hall. We will now turn to questions from voters, starting with this one, which says, "What do you see as the two most pressing issues for the council, and how would you address these?" So, top two priorities, day-one kind of things that you want to tackle. And we start first with Lori Hammond.
As many of you may have seen, I had an op-ed piece in discussing the need for an increase in wage. Most of the candidates up here will speak about things like affordable housing and schools and crime. And if you look at the research, all of those stem back to issues of inequality in wage. I understand that there is a law downstate. They would like to restrict our ability to decide this issue for ourselves. And I think that along with the history that we have had, we have fought against RFRA. We're fighting against the Hate Crimes Bill, the way they want to pass it, and this will be another hurdle that we need to cross. It's important that we deal with wage. I also think that it is extremely important that we bring everyone to the table. We talk a lot about neighborhoods, but we need to bring those people to the table to discuss their true and actual needs. What do these people need from the Common Council? How can we address those needs? What issues in the neighborhoods are something that the council can actually take charge of? So those would be two of my priorities.
Thank you. We hear next from Sue Kessam.
Thank you. I think my two top priorities, as you might guess, one is how the money's spent. That really determines the direction of what happens and what's addressed. I feel that that's been out of balance. Again, I feel like we've missed on the infrastructure, and we've also missed on some of the social issues in terms of our spending. There's 2,200 lane miles of roads. The city keeps taking over more roads from the state. 50% to 80% of those miles are Level 4 or worse, and we need to budget for those things first. The sewers are only 20% done after all these years. We've still got 80% left on that. So I think some of the infrastructure is really critical to address that first. I also think we need to address social issues, such as our homelessness and poverty, and particularly poverty with seniors. I think that's an invisible group that isn't being properly represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luton.
For me, fiscal responsibility is definitely first on the list of priorities. It takes precedence over all things, because if we're not financially responsible with the taxpayers' dollars, then we don't have the trust of those whom we represent. Also, the second on the list of -- that takes precedence for me is community engagement. I want to see more people in our communities at the table. As an at-large candidate, I will represent this entire city. So it is critical that we engage the city in more creative ways so that we can get more people out so that their voice can be heard more. Everyone deserves a seat at the table, and I will ensure that I give them that seat. I personally believe that we have two of the most dynamic groups of individuals here in our community, our elders and our millennials, and they all deserve to have adequate voices at the table.
Thank you. And timekeeper, you can continue to hold the cards to make sure that the candidates and moderator have seen them. Thanks. Okay, we turn next to Lynn Mahoney.
So we were asked this question about a week or so ago at another forum that we did, and I still feel the same way. I don't think that coming in on day one and getting to work is about working on what I think the priorities are. I think the first thing that we all need to do is go out into all of the neighborhoods and talk to the people out there and see what their priorities are. We have beautiful, unique neighborhoods in this city, and each one of those neighborhoods has unique issues that are specific to them. So we all know what the general issues are for the entire city, and we're all going to work on those. But we need to talk to the people in this city and find out what's most important to them and make that a priority also.
Thank you. Anne Mannix.
On my first day, initially, I would like to get to know my fellow council members, understand their priorities and the system that we work in. No one on the council does anything by themselves. It takes five votes to get an ordinance approved. I would also pore over the budget and develop a detailed understanding of the balance sheet, get information on department heads, and get up to speed on current issues before the council. Once I understand the environment, I would look at possible initiatives in areas of interest, which include persons who are homeless, affordable housing, neighborhoods, environments, environmental and energy conservation, and parks. I would hope to accomplish special projects in addition to fulfilling the overall responsibility of representing the citizens of South Bend.
Thank you. David Parker Brooks.
Well, sorry. First and foremost, I also believe that the budget is one of our biggest things that we need to look at. If we are spending money that we can't afford to pay back, it will leave our city and our future residents of this city in a bad position. The second thing, I want to engage the residents of South Bend, educate the residents of South Bend on what the Common Council actually does and all of the benefits that are out in this city that people don't know about. I've come across people in the last month that ask me, "What would you do about this or that?" I'm like, "There are programs in place, but no one knows about them." We need to find ways to reach the people and let them know, "This program is here for you, but you don't know that it's there." Our neighborhoods are segregated, and our neighborhoods are divided among the city, and people in one neighborhood don't talk to people in another neighborhood. So people in certain neighborhoods feel that they're cut off. So let's engage everyone.
Thank you. Rachel Tomas Morgan.
My priorities when elected to the council are to represent all of South Bend with boldness, fairness, and focus. If elected, I will lead and represent boldly. Let's build on South Bend's resurgence, making smart investments that work for families, communities, businesses, and the environment. Continue our city's resurgence with smart investments that attract business and keep talent. Provide opportunities for our children and their children. Advance development with attention to profit, people, and the planet. I will lead and represent with fairness. Let's create equitable solutions to ensure that improvements extend to all areas of our city. I will lead and represent focused on the common good. A public servant serves the public best when her service is efficient, transparent, and collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you. And Karen White.
Okay. For the last five years, I've been the chairperson of the Personnel and Finance Committee. For the last four years, I, along with my fellow council members, we have articulated and also requested funds for the quality of life issues. The last two budgets, it's very clear in regards to -- in terms of the work that the council has done in conjunction with you, the citizens. We have listened, we have heard, and we have responded to all of your concerns. I will continue to advance the quality of life issues, ensuring that the budget strategically results in the issues that we've heard in terms of ensuring that our neighborhoods are safe, that they're clean, and that we have affordable housing. I will hit the ground running if I have the fortune to be able to be elected or reelected to work with my fellow council members, to work with the administration.
Thank you. Last but not least, Alex Giorgio Rubin.
So my top priorities don't come from me. They come from the people I've been talking to since I announced that I was running for the seat. The first one is improving neighborhoods without gentrification, and doing that by getting input from neighbors and making it easier for neighbors to buy adjacent lots and making it easier for people in neighborhoods to start businesses. My second is community safety. And I'm not just talking about crime, but also things like curbs, sidewalks, and lighting. All of these things lead to safe neighborhoods, and -- and those are my priorities.
Thank you. We turn now to another question from voters, and this says, "We hear a lot from both the mayoral and council candidates that they would like to shift priorities to neighborhood improvement. Can you please be specific about how you will do this and what this means?" We start with Ms. Kessam.
Thank you. There's a couple of things that come to mind in terms of neighborhoods and housing. There's a couple of things that come to mind in terms of neighborhoods and housing. We need the low-income housing tax credit program. We need to do accessory dwelling units, which are just smaller units that can kind of fit in. We need to lower the minimum lot sizes so that we can do that. We need to allow residential development in commercial zones, duplexes in single-family areas, and in particular, in terms of financing, micro mortgages, because banks don't like to lend to people, lend fifty thousand or less. So we need to come up with a way of financing lower-cost housing. I also think we need to, of course, spend more money on the infrastructure of improving sidewalks and curbs and, of course, the roads. We all know those potholes need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and great job with the time. Big issues, a small amount of time so we can get to as many of your questions as possible. We turn now to Mr. Luton.
Um, so we have actually, in the past couple of months, have some, some opportunities that we have before us, and that being opportunity zones. Our president has introduced a, a very interesting means of allowing investors and incentivizing investors to be able to gain profits and reap benefits, and at the same time, the community that has lacked economic investments and economic equality to be able to reap from those benefits as well. So I think with the convening power of this council and also with the cooperation of our mayors, we will be able to leverage those opportunity zones for our neighborhoods to be able to have the most maximized, optimal growth to take place.
Thank you. Ms. Mahoney.
I think we need to reexamine some programs that failed in the past, dollar home sales. We moved people into homes, and they were unable to make the improvements to those homes that needed to be done for those neighborhoods. So maybe we look at those programs and we put more requirements to assure the ability that those improvements can be done. We need to look at tax abatements. Instead of giving tax abatements to large corporations that are headquartered somewhere outside of South Bend, we need to start giving tax abatements to people who want to buy houses in these neighborhoods. Give them a five-year tax abatement. The money that they don't have to pay for taxes, they can use to fix up and live in the house.
Thank you. Ms. Mannix.
Uh, a few things that we do already have rental subsidies for rental for homeowners and increase the infrastructure with lights and sidewalks. Two ideas are to have a community development financial institution, they're called CDFIs, and they make sub-market loans to new entities. The city could put in some money, the banks could put in some money, and we build up resources over time because it would get paid back. The second thing I'd like to do is have an orderly process for transferring vacant lots. Everything goes through the tax sale, and it's hard to accumulate land for development. So the city and the county could work together to find a way to use all the vacant lots for transferring it to neighbors or for new development, and find an orderly system so we don't have a lot of misuse of vacant lots.
Thank you. Mr. Parker Brooks.
I believe one big thing about improving our neighborhoods is making our neighborhoods safe and fun to be in. Also, we have a problem in this city with the appearance of it. I've had someone that visited me the other day said, "South Bend is a dirty city." And I said, "What do you mean?" And they said, "There's trash everywhere." I said, "Well, we need to do things to improve that." We can start off by putting city trash cans in each neighborhood that'll help beautify it. If we had more park space, spread out more parks in the city, that would also help engage the residents in our communities. And we'd also benefit from programs that allow us, people that are lower income, to find a path to own a home and give landlords more incentive to keep their properties up, not just regulations and laws to keep them on the hook for it, but to give them things that benefits and incentives to say, "Hey, keep your property in the right order so more people in the neighborhood could appreciate it."
Thank you. Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Solutions to neighborhoods have to come from residents in the neighborhoods themselves. That's my ultimate principle. So, I believe that lifting up neighborhood voice is the most important priority to determining what solutions are in those neighborhoods. There are some great examples at the NNN and in the Southern Neighborhood and District where they are working with the city and area plan to develop what plans and their community should look like in the future. I'd love to see those kinds of examples spread through other neighborhoods and across other districts. And ultimately, as a member of the council and with the city, we need to utilize all the tools available to us to support our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Yes. We have listened to our citizens. A number of the quality of life initiatives that we have grew out of neighbors talking with us. I can recall very clearly, one neighborhood association indicated, "Do not come back to this community without results." I said, "What do you want?" Out of that particular meeting, the Light of South Bend program was developed, also working with other neighbors and neighborhood associations, the curbs and sidewalk program, the graffiti program, and other programs. It's very clear that the budget must reflect our priorities. As you begin to look at the last two budgets, you will notice that we have started, and much remains, to begin to address the quality of life issues within our neighborhoods. We must now focus on job creation and having affordable, clean housing. We do listen, we are engaged, and there's much to, that much remains, and we will continue to listen to all of our citizens, but the budget reflects our priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
All right. So first, we need input from neighbors. We need to listen to the people that actually live in these neighborhoods. We need to listen to neighborhood associations. These are the kind of groups that keep us relevant. We need grocery stores, banks, and green space in every neighborhood. Every neighborhood needs a park. Green space is beneficial in so many ways. Uh, and we need to make it easier for residents to buy lots and take ownership of the neighborhoods. This will amplify the voices of the people that actually live in the neighborhoods. We also need an ordinance to keep predatory lenders and payday loan sharks in check and out of neighborhoods.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond.
The way I view neighborhoods is not as homes and buildings, but as a community. And I think it's critically important that when we look at the neighborhoods as the people, that we recognize that our investment in these communities has to start at a very, very young age. There are programs that will, that other cities have been using that allow us to invest in the youngest in these communities, promoting healthier, more resilient children and youth, families, and communities. And what we find is, from that ground up, we are able to build stronger, more resilient communities. Definitely, we also need to continue to deal with absentee landlord issues because with those unkept homes come lead issues and asthma issues, and when children are ill, they can't go to school and learn, and they can't prosper. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will turn first to Mr. Luton for the next question, which says, "Do you have any plans to address climate change? What can a city council do?"
Um, in regards to being environmentally friendly, I have spoken to an individual, and this individual has a business, and it would actually help alleviate some of our economic burden as well. So this individual, he, he owns a pothole repair company, and we, we know that a lot of the asphalt that we utilize to fill our potholes is detrimental to our environment, and it's highly toxic. This individual, the, the, the emotion that he utilizes is economically friendly, and it is biodegradable, and it actually is proven to, to withstand the test of time two times longer than the, the emotion and the solution that we've utilized in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Mahoney.
So I think we all saw evidence of climate change in the flooding that we've had in the past few years, which has brought up the issues with our stormwater sewers and our drainage systems. So there's a lot of things that we can do to offset the effects of climate change that will also help with other issues. We can increase the use of pervious concrete for streets, sidewalks, curbs, helps get the water out of there, soaks back down into the aquifer. We can require new buildings over a certain height to have green roofs. We can take the cue from New York City, who is having the exact same issues we are, and hand out free sixty-gallon rain barrels to help reduce the amount of water that goes back into the stormwater system. There are several different out-of-the-box ideas that we need to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Mannix.
Uh, the first thing I think the city could do is have a campaign to encourage people to use public transportation and ride bicycles. The city's a large employer, they could get with the other large employers and develop some sort of encouragement to help people use public transportation. They could work with Transpo, have a bus go down South Bend Avenue from Granger. There's a ton of traffic there in the morning, and I don't know if that'll work, but I think it's a great idea. You could have energy-efficient new construction, make everybody meet the Indiana Energy Code, and have a blower door test on new units, and they have to pass the test to pass the city inspection. And the third thing is try to minimize stormwater flooding and have stuff like pervious concrete, as was mentioned, and work on our riverbanks. With climate change, we're going to have to start dealing with more flooding, and we need a program to deal with that.
Thank you. Mr. Parker Brooks.
I believe that one big thing that we have a problem with is apartment protecting our water. Our water is here in South Bend, our stormwater and all the runoff, it goes, it goes through the storm sewer drains and back discharged. There's just some way that we can take our water, like they do in New York City, help collect rainwater. I also believe that mass transit is a good, a good, a good option for helping with the environment. I, I myself am an Uber driver, and we get so many people that get multiple people in one car at one time going one direction. It's a, it's a benefit to all of us to help the climate change. Our buses are running on natural gas, and I, I believe that is one of the best things that we've done in this city, so are city cars. If we had more options for using things like pure ethanol and natural gas for our own vehicles here in South Bend, that would go to dealership selling more of those cars, that we can use electric cars also, and that would help with climate change.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Well, the effects of climate change are certainly indisputable. I was privileged and honored to be able to hear a group of schoolchildren and high schoolchildren make presentations to the common council over the past month, pressing the council to pass ordinance on climate change. Whether it's possible that the council in this term passes an ordinance or possibly a resolution, it's certainly something I would support. Hearing their voices and understanding what their concerns are, how it affects all of us, was just such an empowering thing to be a part of. I, as members of city council, are responsible for the budget, and so as city council member, we can certainly reflect and approve that city budgets reflect efforts to climate change for, to fight climate change.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Yes, I'm happy to report that this council passed a resolution in support of climate change. And just here recently, under the direction and leadership of the director of the Chair of Health and Public Safety, which I am a member, we've been having a number of meetings to begin to look at an ordinance that will address climate change. I would encourage each and every one of you to go to our website and to look at all the information. We were standing room only, and to see not only the public, but those young kids come before us, it was very encouraging. The goal of the conversation will be to develop, to craft, and to present to the council and administration an ordinance dealing with climate change. So we're moving in the right direction.
Just a point of clarification, the resolution in support of climate change, in support of fighting climate change, it sounds like.
Yes, it is.
Yes. And we turn next to Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
Um, climate change is the most pressing issue of our time, and I cannot overstate how serious this issue is. We need to keep climate change in mind with every single issue that comes before the common council. I've spoken with a lawyer with the Sierra Club for possible municipal-level solutions. Things like rain barrels and compost bins are vanity solutions. It's like taking your shoes off at the airport. It looks like something's happening, but it's not really effective. We need to tackle climate change with everything we've got.
Ms. Hammond.
Okay, well, as a teacher, I truly believe that the first step is education. I think that in this community, we have a lot of people that don't recognize the impact that they themselves can make. So I would encourage all of you to learn about the AmeriCorps project that will be sending people into homes and inspecting the homes for energy efficiency, because there are things that each individual in each household can do. I would also encourage, as a city, that we look at some of the possible solar energy plans that are out there. There are other cities using it, and I know that our particular energy company is not a huge fan of that, but we could talk to them about that. City subsidies, perhaps, or grants for people that are putting through energy-efficient initiatives in their own home.
Thank you. Ms. Kessam.
Um, I've sat in multiple meetings over the years watching developers get abatements, TIF dollars, and what has disappointed me is that they are not required to bill to lead grade standards. Reality is, is when a developer's done with the building, the taxpayers end up with it dumped on them again. And if it's lead standard, it lowers the utility use and it improves the overall use of the building for longer. For multiple years, I've been the admin for Michiana Yarners, which is part of Unity Gardens, that encourages people to take up grass in their yards and plant vegetables. This does two things. Grass is not environmentally friendly, and it encourages people to take ownership of their own house with healthy eating. I also have researched and suggested that our access buses run on propane, like in Laporte. Propane is cleaner burning, and it would lower the cost of access buses by about twenty dollars per trip. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that sounds like a wonderful menu of options that the council can draw upon. We turn next to a question from somebody who came prepared, not with a note card, but with a typed question with supporting research from the Tribune. So we'll, we'll take that question next. It will go first to Ms. Mahoney. It says, "Over the past two years, there have been numerous home and car burglaries in the Edison Park neighborhood southeast of the Notre Dame campus and in the area directly south of campus in Harder Heights, even in broad daylight. Do you have any special knowledge about or insight into this concentrated wave of crime near the university? What do you think can be done about it? Since more student rental properties are located near Notre Dame, is there a special kind of solution at hand?" And again, that goes first to you, Ms. Mahoney. And again, that goes first to you, Ms. Mahoney.
I'm not personally aware of that concentration of crime, but I think that we've seen crime in some categories increase all over our city. And I think that we need to possibly take a step back and look at some of the old ways that we used to police. We had special units that would take care of drug crimes. We had police dogs. I think the city, if I'm not mistaken, I think the city is down to one or two police dogs now. I think we're doing a very good job lighting up different areas of our neighborhoods, but as you said, these things are happening in broad daylight. I think we have to figure out how to budget for more police officers and more specialty units to handle issues like this.
Thank you. Ms. Mannix?
I've seen over the years, Notre Dame students move in, they have a lot of nice stuff, they get robbed in the first week because they aren't used to locking their doors, they don't know how to be friendly with the neighbors, and it happens every year. So I think we need to educate students and say, "Look, you need to lock your doors, you need to pay attention to your neighbors and be careful, this isn't like living on campus." And criminals go to where the expensive things are, and the cars, and the same thing with the cars. So I think if you have education and you have special police patrols, especially at certain pressure points like football games and the beginning of the year, you could eliminate a lot of crime.
Thank you. Mr. Parker-Brooks?
To reiterate what one of my colleagues said, we don't have a special crimes unit, we don't have a drug task force here in South Bend. We find that people are victims of predatory behavior. In South Bend, there, in 2018, it was reported that per square mile, there's 147 crimes per square mile. The national average is 30. Indianapolis is 31.1. Our police department is doing their best. I believe that. We need more police officers. Last I heard, the police department was short a few officers. We need to help them in recruiting. We need to recruit from within our own residents. We need to get, help them get programs where students want to be police officers when they grow up. And that'll also help them take pride in the neighborhoods that they're patrolling. I see friends of mine that are on the police force now and it makes me feel good when I see one of them pull up because I know they're invested in this community.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas Morgan?
Yeah, addressing that particular, addressing that question, that particular area of town, my understanding in talking to neighbors in that particular area is that it is a, the issues come from a concentration of student housing, as Ann had mentioned, but also housing that is not owner-occupied 12 months of the year. And so as we have more non-owner-occupied housing in that neighborhood, we're going to see more crime. Again, I mean, as a city, we need to understand what the tools are available to us to help fight crime in that neighborhood and across the city. We need to continue to support our police force and their community policing efforts that they've done so well, improving over the past few years.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Yes, I agree with what most of the panelists have shared with you. As you begin to look at crime, it's really throughout the city. There's certain districts that you may have a disproportionate number of burglaries and one is the Notre Dame area because it has a high concentration of students and students are in and out. So one, I think it would be very important to have an educational program in regards from a safety perspective, that they need to have a close working relationship with the police officers that are in that particular neighborhood. They need to know their neighbors, they need to reach out in the community, and the neighbors also will be a very support base for those students in terms of addressing crime and making sure that everyone is aware of what's happening, who's doing what, but most importantly, having a relationship amongst themselves, but also with the police officers that patrol that particular area.
Thank you. Mr. Giorgio Rubin?
I don't have any particular insight into that concentration of crime. I can assume it's because people believe that students are vulnerable and easy targets. What I propose is police and citizen engagement and social infrastructure. Those are great, great ways to help with crime and I would ask that everybody ask themselves what Mr. Rogers would do. Get to know your neighbors, get to know the people patrolling your neighborhood. All these things can help fight crime.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond?
I do not have a specialty in policing and crime, so I, first thing I would want to do is consult those that do. They would have a greater insight into some of the options to dealing with this type of crime. I am a huge advocate, as I mentioned earlier, of education, so I agree with Ann and Karen that educating the students when they first arrive at campus is probably a critical piece to stopping a large portion of this type of crime.
Thank you. Ms. Kessam?
I think crime is a problem throughout the city. We have a level three safety rating out of 100, 100 being the most safe. We are rated at number three. That's definitely a problem. And in addressing a senior group I work with, they were concerned about security and that could be for any age. So what I did was I came up with a safety home checklist of making their environment safer. It's available for anyone to download on my website. I think that one of the things the officers have asked for when I talked with the police chief is they'd like people to share their video with the police department. There's so many more video cameras out there and that can help them save crime. They also want more police officers so they have greater foot patrol and I think that's also a great idea. We can also analyze crime heat maps and for that, we can do preventive knowing at a certain time when crimes are more prevalent. Thank you.
Mr. Luton?
Well, I'm sure we are all aware that South Bend does have an issue with crime and it's citywide. However, crime is a mere symptom of the condition that is happening here in South Bend. We know that there's a direct correlation between criminality and poverty and a lack of education. So I believe once we begin to hold our elected officials and our school corporation accountable and that we began to invest into our youth and our people here within the community, that it will trickle down and you will see an immediate, drastic change in our crime once we start investing in things like our education and investing in things such as job creation and economic stability in a lot of the communities that have not been able to see economic growth.
Thank you very much. We have a lot more questions and we did have a request after our two-hour-long forums to try to fit some of the networking into the two hours. So we are going to move into the challenging section, which is to try to respond very directly in 30 seconds to these more targeted questions. And we will hear first from Ann Mannix about one specific step you would take to address homelessness in our community.
I would get an intake center where people could come when they're homeless and be directed to other resources. And I would also develop more supportive housing so people have a place to go.
Mr. Parker-Brooks?
I'm a fan of engaging the homeless where they're at. We need to set up an intake center, I agree with that, but also talk with them and get them involved and what's hindering them from getting to where they're at and where they need to be. I met a guy Saturday, he asked me for money. I said, "What's the issue?" He said, "I need food." I said, "No, what's your issue?" And he told me what the issue was, so I directed him to some resources to help him get from point A to point B instead of just sitting there in one spot and getting stuck.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas Morgan?
Firstly, we need to acknowledge that homelessness is a citywide issue. It's systemic, it's citywide and it's regional. It's not a South Side issue, not a District Six or a District Three issue. And I want to say that mental illness is a major contributor of homelessness, accounting for 25% of our chronic homeless population. So we need to address a continuum of care. Better mental health services combats not only mental illness, but homelessness as well.
Ms. White?
Yes, I would create a system to identify the homeless and to match them with affordable, appropriate housing. Secondly, coordinate a system of services to support the long-term care housing stability. And three, create a permanent housing to meet the demand. In this city, we have worked towards having a gateway that will be associated with permanent housing. The challenge that we have is that individuals are very supportive of having permanent housing, but not in my community.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin?
So the quick answer is wraparound services, expanded access to shelter, not just winter amnesty, and a more comprehensive bill of renters' rights.
Ms. Hammond?
We need to get to the core of what is causing homelessness. The research tells us it's a combination of addiction, illness, and poverty. All of those are things that we can address in our community. One of the issues with addiction is that we deal with it as a crime instead of a health issue and that can be something that we look at and provide assistance and treatment for those people.
Ms. Kessam?
My grandmother always said, "Many hands make light work." We have a lot of religious organizations in our city. I think if each one adopted one person, really focused on them, took them to the meetings and medical appointments and things, really focused, because this haphazard, you get a little help here, you get a little help there, doesn't really work. So I think adopt, sponsor, foster, and have our community step up and really wrap around one person at a time.
Mr. Luton?
As we know, South Bend is one of the areas that has the most services for homeless individuals or home impaired individuals. We need to ensure that we are cooperating with other cities that are within the region or that are within the area and within our county. And we also need to ensure that we are partnering with the philanthropic sector so that we can further engage these individuals and we can have wraparound services and we can begin to focus on restoration.
Ms. Mahoney?
So I read something yesterday that said we have 125 chronically homeless people in this area right now. And there was the statement made that they've had a very difficult time finding anywhere for the intake center and if they continue to have that difficult time, they're just going to give up. We can't just give up. These people, each chronically homeless individual costs our city $30,000 to $50,000 a year. We've got plenty of empty buildings.
Thank you. The next question says, "One reason some people move out of South Bend are the public schools. Is there actually anything the council can do to improve the schools? Can they take them over?" Mr. Parker-Brooks?
I don't think taking them over is the answer. I think the answer is to partner with not only the schools, but the parents and the students. There are reasons that students aren't engaged at school. It's a symptom of what's going on at home a lot of times. And also, we have, a lot of times, we have educators that our students can't identify with. We have educators that look one way, but we have students that look another and they're having communication issues. So we need to find ways to partner them together and reach them in their homes.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas Morgan?
Yeah, you know, as a city and council, there are a number of ways to be supportive and both the city and council have been doing that very strongly. More recently, well, there has been talk about having a liaison between the council and the schools. Would be interested in learning, interested in knowing what that looks like. The city has talked about a commitment to wraparound programs. The city has a partnership with the schools to have school resource officers in the middle schools as just some examples.
Ms. White?
We must have a high-level strategic engagement with our public schools and the other school corporations. We cannot be a successful city without having successful educational institutions. Our schools are in our neighborhoods and we need them. The businesses, when they come into the city, one of the first questions that they tend to ask, "Tell me where the good schools are at." We need to have a conversation, we need to have a strategic plan, we need to be able to support our public schools, we need to be able to support our teachers and our students in the schools.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin?
I think we can support and be cheerleaders for our public schools while respecting the autonomy of the South Bend School Corporation. I think one way to do that is to invest in after-school programs, things like arts and sports to get kids engaged, help them find their corner of the sky.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond?
A lot of what I believe is happening in our public schools is, again, a poverty issue. Poverty is an education issue, it's a health issue, it's a safety issue, it's an affordable housing issue. These kids go to school and they are not able to acquire the education because they are too distracted by their reality. So I do, again, think that we need to start dealing with some of the core issues in the neighborhoods to provide for these children, to allow them to adequately be educated.
Ms. Kessam?
One of the things I've personally done was I've worked with someone to bring the Maker Faire to South Bend. Maker Faire promotes kids' learning technologies such as robots, 3D printing, things like that, to up the level in terms of how we compete nationally. I also think that we can partner to raise enough funds to fully fund pre-K. That's been one of the things where there's sometimes a waiting list. And I also think we could sponsor goal programs and parenting programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luton?
I think that we need to create a task force that we could potentially explore the option of possibly a hyperboard or either a fusion of the sorts. Also, I think that our elected officials need to be more visible in our schools. We need to be more visible in our neighborhoods and we need to be more accessible. We have a lot of issues that plague our communities and the citizens of our communities and I believe if we lend a helping hand and providing those services, that we can continue to move forward.
Ms. Mahoney?
So the city of South Bend has very little control over what South Bend Community Schools does. Money comes from downstate. We do need, I believe, as Joseph said, some sort of task force. I was at a meeting the other day with the principal of Jackson Middle School and some of the school board members who pointed out the inequities in the schools in our city and the fact that schools can manage to have two resource officers, but they have no social worker.
Ms. Mannix?
I'm involved in working with 466 Works. They have, we're working to get kids from Riley Building Houses in the neighborhood. I think we need more after-school and daycare programs like the United Way is doing. I'd like to see the city get some more interns and help kids understand what education is for. Finally, we have homeless kids that move every three months and if we work with them, they'll be more ready to learn.
Thank you. The next question says specifically, "Can you tell me about one thing in your life that has best prepared you to serve on the council?" And this goes first to Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Wow, that's quite a question. You know, I think it's my, quite honestly, it's my experience in the neighborhood organization in the Near West Side. Learning about the work of the council through our neighborhood issues has really impassioned me and so these are issues about zoning, about safety, about lighting, about streets. And, yeah.
Ms. White?
I would say it would have been, and it was, my eight years of being a South Bend Community School Board trustee, I've served during some of the toughest times. Community School Board trustee, I've served during some of the toughest times being on the school board, the appointment of new superintendent, making decisions in terms of where Rodney High School was going to be. So it taught me how to work collaboratively together. It taught me how to do my research. I had to understand budget. But most importantly, it taught me the importance of listening to our citizens as well as listening to our students.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
So being the parent to a child with autism, we're not doing things the normal way. We're finding new solutions to problems. And I really think that has prepared me for this.
Ms. Hammond.
Teaching. I teach AP Government and civics and politics and getting the students, these young adults, ready for adulting, we hope, to understand the need to be civically engaged, to understand the importance of voting, just getting them ready to be responsible citizens.
Ms. Kessam.
My inspiration was my mother. She was Mayor Valcart, and she was a civic, she showed me civic commitment to a city and the commitment that you represent everyone, whether they voted for you or not. I also got my inspiration from my grandparents who started Habitat for Humanity. And also, they taught me that we have a civic obligation to make the world better. And they did that. So, thank you.
Mr. Luton.
For me, I believe the last three years of my life has exemplified that the necessity and the components of an adequate leader. I've done humanitarian work in Cuba. I've done humanitarian work in Haiti and, most recently, in Ethiopia. I've embarked on several journeys to over 20 countries in the past two and a half years. And my engagement of diversity and different people groups, I believe, has prepared me to be an adequate leader.
Thank you. Ms. Mahoney.
So the reason why I think that I can sit in one of the council seats is because of my journey to become a nurse. I left here in 1979 after I graduated from Riley. I got married. I got divorced. I had, well, I had four kids, then I got divorced. My children and I lived on child support and food stamps. I sent them to live with their father because he could take care of them better than I could, and I was homeless. At 35, I went back to nursing school to become a nurse. So when I tell people I've been there and I understand, I do.
Ms. Mannix.
I think, I've talked about my work. Having a family has helped me learn to deal with various kinds of people. My son didn't learn to read till he was in the third grade. He could barely read then. I was very alarmed about this. I mean, it all worked out fine, but it made me realize that not everybody's going to be the smartest kid in the room. So you've got to deal with all kinds of people. I also met their friends. They had nowhere to go and school was off, so they came to our house and lived there. One guy had no money for college, so we had to help him find college money. So brought it home in a very visceral way, the variety of people in our community.
Thank you. And Mr. Parker-Brooks.
For the last eight years, I've been a leader at the Holy Church of God New Journey. And being a leader there, I've been tasked with dealing with budgets, dealing with issues of all sorts, from maintenance issues to drug addiction to different things that happen in people's lives. And it all gets put on the shoulders of the leadership team of our church. And this leadership role, that I have to take on these responsibilities day and night, no matter what time someone might call. And no matter what happens, I have to help them find a solution to the issue.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Ms. White. It says, "Please describe your approach to decision-making."
My approach is, one, I do my homework. I put in the time to understand what the issues are. I work with individuals. I talk with individuals. I meet with individuals. Then I take all that information and to make sure that the decisions that I'm going to make is based on proven evidence. It's also based on listening to our citizens, but most importantly, based on what is right for not only our city, but the citizens that I have been elected to serve. I'm open and honest and I'm transparent.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
This is very simple. Listen to the experts.
Ms. Hammond.
I'm a big believer in collaboration, and I think we should always work across the barriers, whether it's different platforms, sectors, agendas, interests, any of those things. And then we roll up our sleeves and we find a solution.
Ms. Kessam.
I like using something called long-path thinking. I see a lot of short-sighted decisions being made. And long-path thinking takes into account planning for seven generations out. What's better in the long run, in the really long run? For example, like the sewers being only 20% done. So we need to stop on just reacting and we need to look at really long solutions.
Mr. Luton.
Firstly, we need to critically analyze the issue at hand. Secondly, we need to do a risk analysis. Thirdly, there needs to be systematic development in our approach. And fourthly, there needs to be implementation. And then lastly, there has to be proper execution of said implementation of the strategies that we will put forth at hand.
Ms. Mahoney.
So for 17 years, I was a trauma and ER nurse. I've learned how to watch, listen, and when I don't know the answer, ask the guy who does.
Ms. Mannix.
With Karen, I would try to gather as much information as I can. Look at it through a prism of who will benefit? Who are the winners and losers from this decision? And then what is the collective benefit to the city as a whole? How much money will it cost? If it's a lot of money, it better be pretty good. And then how's it going to affect our environment? Finally, I would do a gut check. Sometimes you get this feeling, something just isn't quite right. And if you listen to that, you keep going, maybe you can figure it out. So I go through a long process.
Mr. Parker-Brooks.
The first thing I do, I need to gather all the information, bringing the right people to the table that are experts in the subject that we're dealing with. And we work together to come up with a compromise sometimes. Sometimes everybody doesn't win, but when it comes to making decisions, you have to do what's best for the entire whole of the community.
Ms. Tomas Morgan.
For me, it requires data-driven, evidence-based approaches to decision-making and assisting commitment to seeking input from everyone involved. So I'm one of those learners that gathers all kinds of information, from direct experience to experts and sifting and analyzing all that to come up with the best decisions possible.
Thank you. Next question says, "We've heard tonight that poverty is at the root of many of our city's social problems. What specific thing could the council do to fight the high poverty rate in our community?" Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
I think create an environment that is friendly to businesses, friendly to entrepreneurs, and especially friendly to small businesses. I also think that although we have no power over the minimum wage in South Bend, I think we can, as common council members, lobby the state to repeal the law.
Ms. Hammond, we know you agree with that point.
I want to hug him. So, yes, we can repeal the law. It's being done in several other cities and states. The other issue is to meet with the business owners. These are great people. We have to trust the people that own the businesses in this city. They want to do what's best for the employees. And sometimes it's just a lack of understanding. So if we can meet with them and they are brought to an understanding of the needs of their employees, I have a lot of faith in people.
Ms. Kessam.
I believe in growing the economy from the ground up like developing countries do. I think we could do microloans. Most jobs are created from startups. I also think we need to provide more life skills and money coaching and prep people for higher-paying jobs, such as with the trades and apprenticeships.
Mr. Luton.
I personally will lobby for dollars to be allocated for job skills training programs in our public recreational centers so we can better steer our youth away from violence and towards opportunity. I would like to see a citywide initiative or collaborative effort with the Unity Gardens. We have upwards of maybe 700-plus lots available. I think that if we would engage our youth and create a sort of fund for our youth, that we would be able to implement gardens into these spaces. And if you have more questions, I would be happy to share.
Ms. Mahoney.
I think we have to take some of the financial resources that we already have and stop concentrating on bringing in outside companies. We need to go to our neighborhoods with tax abatements and grants. And we need to say, "Who wants to start a grocery store? Who wants to start a barber shop?" We need to support the people that are already here. And we also need to lobby to get more union businesses in this city.
Ms. Mannix.
We give money away in tax abatement, tax increment financing. I think we could impose minimum wage requirements on those businesses. Second, we need to promote small businesses and minority businesses. Third, I think we need programs to help people coming out of poverty stay in their jobs. A lot of times, people get a job, their car breaks down, then they lose their job or they lose their healthcare benefits. So have transitional programs for people.
Mr. Parker-Brooks.
I think it's important that any company that comes into South Bend that wants a tax abatement be asked to pay a certain livable wage, a sustainable wage. But I also think that education is a big key to it also. If we can teach our young people in school, and when they come out of high school, have a tangible trade, and not just prepare them to take tests and move on to possibly move on to a college, I think that would go a long way for the generations, to help get out of poverty and stay out of poverty.
Ms. Tomas Morgan.
I teach about global poverty and sustainable development. And so to answer this question in 30 seconds, such a wicked, complex issue, is a little absurd. But what I can say is that poverty is a multifaceted problem. And it requires multifaceted solutions and approaches, economic, social, cultural solutions so everyone can flourish.
Ms. White.
I agree that it is a holistic approach that we must have. It's not just looking at education or job creation or looking at minority businesses. We have to approach this from a very strategic, planned approach. The city can become a catalyst in pulling together all these various constituents and institutions together to talk about how this city, the city of South Bend, is going to address this problem. First, we have to fully recognize that it is a challenge and that we have the resources to address it.
Thank you. We, am I right that we're going to start with you, Cory Hammond, next? Am I in the right order? Oh, okay. Just double-checking myself here. All right, we're going to squeeze in two more questions, then we have an opportunity for the candidates to tell you why they deserve your vote on or before Election Day. And the first question says, "Is there anything that council members can do to improve trust and respect between South Bend residents and the South Bend police?" Ms. Hammond.
I believe that a, and I don't misread me, a greater presence in the neighborhoods and communities, but more what was mentioned earlier, foot patrol, the police officers actually engaging in the communities with the people in the neighborhoods, building trust. That would require that we find a way to channel some additional money to the police department to give them the members they need.
Thank you. Ms. Kessam.
When I spoke with the police chief, he talked about in-reach, community in-reach. And I think the council can help with that. I think they do when they go on their bus tours of the neighborhoods and the outreach for that. I've encouraged many people to become involved in the Neighborhood Watch. There's a lot of things that can be done to foster that. I think one of the greatest things, though, might be playing the police tapes. I think that's created a lot of mistrust among the community.
Mr. Luton.
I personally believe that there should be a citizens' review board that needs to be implemented. I believe that we have made a bit of progress with transparency and community relations with our police personnel, but I think that we still have a lot further to go.
Ms. Mahoney.
I got to 100% agree with Ms. Kessam. There's a feeling out there that there is a reason to not play the tapes. And in order to get over that feeling and get to a place where citizens in this city trust the police again, there has to be 100% transparency. They need to release the tapes.
Ms. Mannix.
The tapes are in the hands of the court, and we're going to have to do what the court says. I think the council can follow up on complaints. If somebody calls and says the police did this or that, we need to take it seriously and go talk to the police chief. I think we need to strengthen the police review board. I don't know about adding citizens, but that needs to be strengthened. And we need more police to come to neighborhood meetings and get to know people.
Mr. Parker-Brooks.
I think it's important that we have community policing. This is our city. This is the resident city. And we partner with the police department to set up different groups that help police the city, police the community. And also, we need more police officers that are from this city and that our residents know every day.
Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Yeah, as a council, we can continue to support the current police chief and his efforts to build better relations between the police and the community. I think we've come a long way over the years there. The police's commitment to the group Violence Initiative intervention has been really important for the safety of our community as well and to the issue of the tapes. Now that it is in the hands of the court, it's my hope that that decision will provide resolution and allow us to move on.
Thank you. Ms. White.
I would say that not releasing the tapes has really polarized this community. And it's a challenge that we will more than likely continue to experience until a resolution it will be made in terms of those tapes. I think it's important that we work collaboratively together with our police officers. I think it's important that the council members, that they are involved in their communities, that they go out with the police officers. We need more community policing. Our neighbors need to know who our police officers are.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
So the short answer is, we need citizens on the police review board, and we need to make sure that the police are getting to know the citizens. Again, what would Mr. Rogers do? We need to form those relationships so people feel comfortable calling the police. As for the tapes, we were supposed to get a decision today from a judge, and that's been put off, but that's a legal matter, and we can't go against the courts.
Thank you. This next question says, "Can you explain taxation and disbursement? I hear candidates talk about all the things they want to do for our neighborhoods, but is there enough of a tax base in the city to support all of this work?" Ms. Kessam.
The budget enthusiast. So, yes, there is enough money if we spend it correctly. One of the things I see us doing is borrowing a lot of money, and there's a lot of interest expense. I think if we did more pay-as-you-go, we would get more done. So it's a matter of priorities. And I've said multiple times in budget hearings, poor priorities, we need better priorities. And that comes with deciding the finances. Thank you.
Mr. Luton.
Indeed. I think that there needs to be possibly more responsible spending with our TIF dollars. I think that as we continue to petition different businesses to come to this area, that we require of those whom we give tax baits, tax abatements to. that we require of those whom we give tax abatements to to hire from within. And we put a specification in the, I got to stop.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mahoney.
I think we need to use our TIF funds for very specific projects that have more to do with infrastructure than beautification. I think we need to allow some of the TIF districts to expire. They've been around for a long time. And you have to weigh the benefit of the TIF and the fact that you're taking money away from other entities that need it, like the county, the schools. So we have to make a very careful, weighted decision when it comes to TIFs.
Ms. Mannix.
We used to go talk to the city, ask them for money, and they'd say, we don't have any money. But what that really meant was, we don't have any money for you. And I think the city has found priority. If there's a priority, they find the money to do it. And I don't have a detailed knowledge of the budget, but I think what we have to do is set our priorities and find a way to fit into the budget.
Mr. Parker Brooks.
We've taken enough tax revenue and grants and things from outside resources that provide everything the city needs. We've got a brand-new $650,000 boombox. So that should show you that we have plenty of money, but we have to allocate it to the right projects and the right places.
Ms. Tomas Morgan.
Yeah, I'm going to answer it this way. TIF, similar to tax abatements, require accountability and benefit to the community for its effective use. So the TIF investments generally relieve the general fund by paying for public safety, infrastructure, water, sewer lines, quality of life, et cetera. It can also be used to encourage businesses to locate in South Bend versus another locale or state. But it needs to be used smartly and effectively for everyone's benefit.
Ms. White.
We are in a very excellent position. There's been a lot of information in regards to that the city is in debt. Our reserves that we have, cash reserves, are higher than what the state has required. I would think that we, as a city, and as we move forward with this upcoming budget, that we need to look at our reserves and to see how we can use those reserves to really address the needs of our community, but most importantly, address the needs that we heard you, the citizens, that you have asked for. So it's looking at all the different revenue streams and coming up with what's best for our system.
Mr. Giorgio Rubin.
So I look forward to working with the next administration on financial issues. I think we do need to set priorities and take every area of the city into account. I think TIF is a key financial tool, but it needs to be beneficial to all of South Bend's neighborhoods. And TIF projects need to be environmentally and financially sound. The reality is that we are going to run into a property tax cap, but the current administration, I believe, is leaving us prepared.
Ms. Hammond.
In terms of fiscal priorities, much of the budget has very little flexibility. We're talking about having to fund our departments, pay salaries, building and equipment costs. And then we do have the debt payments that have to be made. Any of our discretionary money needs to be made around the needs of the citizens of the city. So that is going to be the responsibility of the council to determine what the needs of the residents of the city are.
Before we turn to candidate closing statements, I mean, we could be here all night with questions. I just want to take a moment to give a hand to these candidates. 30-second responses. They did a good job saying a lot in a short amount of time. Now they've been asked to take 30 more seconds to give you their final elevator pitch to indicate why it is that they deserve your vote for council. And we will continue in the order we have here. So we will start with Mr. Luton.
Thank you. I've resided on the northwest side of South Bend for 30 years, for as long as I can remember. I've woken up to drive-bys. I can count at least 10 to 15 family members and personal friends who I've lost to gun violence. And I think that we have gone in a direction of where we have a lot of momentum and we need to engage more youth in our leadership. And we need to also make sure that we are, that we're engaging more of our community. And I want to be that person for you all.
Lynn Mahoney.
So my grandparents grew up here. My parents grew up here. I grew up here. My kids are growing up here. No, my kids grew up here. My grandkids are growing up here. I want to have a chance to make this a safe, healthy, happy place for not only my grandchildren, but everybody's children and grandchildren to grow up. I'd appreciate that chance. Thank you.
Ann Mannix.
I listen to people. I work hard. I get things done because I care. I believe in democracy and inclusion. By inclusion, I mean promoting racial equality and reversing historic inequities. My priorities are fostering economic equality, solid neighborhoods, providing a nurturing environment for children and families, and improving the quality of the environment. Work with me to build a better South Bend. Vote for Ann Mannix on May 7.
David Parker Brooks.
I believe that I was given two ears and one mouth so I can listen twice as much as I speak. I want to be the voice for the people of South Bend. I have been here for 24 years. My mom's family goes back generations. I believe that this community needs somebody like me that's not a politician. That's the average working Joe. That has to drive on the same roads, pay the same bills. They have the same problems that you guys have. I want to be the one that can stand in the council chambers and be someone that you guys know that you can count on. And every day that we need to be there, I'll be there.
Rachel Tomas Morgan.
We know the nation is watching us in South Bend. On May 7, we will elect a new city government. It will be a defining moment for the next chapter of South Bend's history. I, Rachel Tomas Morgan, seek your support for common council at large. When elected, I pledge to lead and represent all of South Bend with boldness, fairness, and focus. I believe in our city and in ourselves. Together, let's write that next chapter of South Bend's story. Let's build a South Bend where dreams are realized, opportunities are available for everyone, and where we all can thrive.
Thank you. Karen White.
I have devoted over 28 years of my life to being a public servant, not a politician. I am a thoughtful, experienced, and proven leader, delivering results. Check my record. I'm committed. I'm passionate. Check my record. I listen to our citizens. Check my record. I'm committed to this community. I have devoted all of my time, my passion. I believe in South Bend. And I know that I have and will continue to make a difference. So vote for me at the bottom of the ballot, Karen White.
Alex Giorgio Rubin.
Again, I'm the parent of a child with special needs, so I know what it takes to be an advocate. I'm an advocate every single day. I know that it takes listening, patience, persistence, follow-through. And I want to be an advocate for the people of South Bend.
Lori Hammond.
In many circles in this city, there are people that are extremely proud of the progress that we've made. My goal and the reason that I'm asking you to vote for me is I think that everyone should have a chance to feel that pride in our city. This is why I'm willing to fight for a livable wage for everyone. Pride comes from providing for yourself and for your family. Pride comes for being independent and self-reliant. And we need to make sure that the city of South Bend and the government here in South Bend is working for everyone.
Susan Kessam.
For decades, I've been an advocate in this community, in particular seniors and those with disabilities. As a budget enthusiast, I've given 28 concrete reforms I think we need to implement. I've studied TIF abatements and 20 other issues that I have on kessamforcouncil.com. I feel that I'm prepared. I'm more than prepared by going to the council meetings for the last three years and budget hearings. And I ask that you vote for me on May 7. I'm Sue Kessam. Thank you.